Good evening. This is the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of July 29th, 2016. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I feel like I said July 29th. It's July 27th. Thank you very much. So you can tell it's been a rather busy week. We have just a couple of announcements to make and then we'll go into our public hearing, the public comment. We have, alright, some correspondence that's in the mail. We'll go over to that later. We have a word from Brenda Kegel that Dutchess County Transportation Committee is looking for some input from folks regarding the loop bus. And we are, we just in fact posted to the website the form to fill out to give some input. They would like to know where you would like that service to be extended and how you utilize it. And the Senior Services Committee also has a solicitation for similar type of information. The other thing, some housekeeping, folks, if we could. We discussed earlier about our dates for the future town board meetings. And at this time, since it may affect some of the decisions we make tonight, I thought maybe we could review that. We discussed the possibility, as we do each year, of having one meeting in August for obvious reasons, the fair and the slow summer season. We've discussed potentially having it August 16th instead of having two meetings on the 9th and the 24th. Is that still good, Jim, for you?
Yep.
To do that? Okay. And Bill, for you as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now, in September, it turns out we have a conflict also in September because, as Sue reminded me, we have a primary and they'll be utilizing this room until 9:00 PM on September 13th, which is the second Tuesday. And so I thought perhaps we might consider actually having that meeting on Wednesday, September 7th, since it will be three weeks after our August 16th meeting. And then it would be another three weeks until our September 28th meeting. And I wonder if you, I know I'm catching you without your calendar probably, Bill.
But where's it? Is the August 16th the primary election? No, August 9th.
No, no, that's September 13th.
No, no, I'm back to August.
No, there's no primary in August. That's the September we're talking about.
Turns out the first meeting, oh, in September is the primary.
In September is the primary. That would be September 13th.
Oh, yeah.
So on...
So we're good for August 16th.
We're all good with that, right?
And then you propose September 7th and 28th.
That is, no, you're okay with that. Jim, do you happen to know if that works for you? As we do have to look...
I have my calendar, it seems to, Robert.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and do that? And if we need to make a change with that, we'll do it at our August 16th meeting. But we'd like the public to have as much advance notice. So our meeting, our town board meeting schedule is going to be revised as follows. We'll have a meeting on August 16th instead of August 9th and 24th. And we'll have our first meeting in September. Instead of September 13th, it will be September 7th, which is a Wednesday. So look for us on those dates and we will have this posted to the town website. And that's all I have for announcement at this time. Does anybody else have any announcements?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Well, we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:35 and we're on time. Sue McCann, would you like to read the public hearing notice? Thank you very much.
Notice of Public Hearing Regarding the Use of Monies in the Community Preservation Fund for the Acquisition of Recreational Park Annex Parcel. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on July 27th, 2016 at 7:35 o'clock PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. To hear all interested persons regarding the use of monies in the Community Preservation Fund to complete the purchase of approximately 1.09 acres located on Linden Avenue and further described as Lot 1 of the Linden West subdivision. The Recreation Park Annex Parcel is referred to. The Town Board has previously determined that the purchase of the Recreation Park Annex Parcel is an unlisted action and adopted a negative declaration with respect to such purchase. Please take further notice that copies of the application are available for review at the Office of the Town Clerk, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board, the Town of Red Hook, dated July 12th, 2016, Sue McCann, Town Clerk.
And Sue, you can confirm that it was published in both newspapers?
Both newspapers, the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Daily Freeman, yes. Posted on the town web, sent to the two villages and the website, yes.
Thank you very much, Sue. Are there any public comments related to? Okay, Linda?
Lady Cailin, I think it's a great idea to use the CPF fund money. This will help to expand the Red Park landwise and give a little protection to the people who live around there and just make it more accessible in general for everyone. So, good job.
Thank you very much, Linda. Okay, any other comments for the, in the public hearing? All right, hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're now at the point where we're entertaining public comments. And Linda, would you like to make some public comments?
Okay. I'm here in regards to the vendor that is across the way from maybe Papa's Best Batch, which I've been having communications with the town. And I have not received back communication from Steve recently in regards to whether or not this is illegal sighting. From my information, from what I gathered, it's not. The farmer's market was given on March 18th, 2013, a site plan and special permit for the operation of the farmer's market. The vendors were to be inside, approximately 20. Nothing was to be outside. All of a sudden, 2015, this vendor pops up in his trailer and is selling food. And according to Steve and his, the minutes of the ZRC, February 12th, 2015, he says, "At the present time, food trucks are not allowed in the Town of Red Hook." So therefore, I am assuming that that particular truck is not allowed. He has had many issues with safety for the public. In one case, the sign blew over. I had to pick up all the pieces that were in the road. The next time, there were two fires on his steamer, the smoker. And also, the smoke comes to my house. I and my husband have problems with breathing. My husband in particular, and it's getting worse. And with those particulates in the air, it's not helping. So, I want that eliminated. Also, that trailer is very close to the stream. It's right on the edge of the stream. That's a New York State designated wetlands. The creek is protected. My creek shares, it goes right under the road. It's hydrologically connected. And so it is a wetlands. Whatever Norman says, it is a wetlands. This individual who's running it, Jody Appap, sometimes he's there, sometimes he's not. Sometimes he starts his business, he's got the cooker going, and then he gets in his truck and goes away. Nobody is there looking over the property, what's happening. That furnace, it is a furnace, is a danger to children. Lots of times I see children running all over, unsupervised. And I would hate, as a former teacher, to see a child run into that and get seriously burned. So, if this is illegal, it should be taken down to protect the people. There was also another case where there were, there was a dog on a leash, a person who's probably from New York City. And another car, had his dog in the car, in a truck. That dog jumped out of the car and attacked the dog. There was a man who tried to separate the dogs and he got bit. And then another man picked up the bat that was on the ground and hit the one dog very hard. And my heart went out to the dog because it's just screamed very loud. So, this individual is not taking care of the property, not looking out for the public, is working alone, is not there all the time, and is just a menace. And I'm fearful that if he has propane tanks, they're gonna go up in a big boom. So I would like the situation taken care of. Do you wanna update me?
Thank you, Linda. Yes, and I appreciate your adding some comments, a couple things I didn't know. We have had Steve go out to the side a couple of times. My understanding is that he has moved his location to comply with separation distances for the fire code. We're still looking into some of the legal aspects right now. And hopefully, we'll have something back to you in a timely or reasonable manner. I apologize, I didn't realize the smoke was headed all your way. You should know that our code does have provisions in it to protect you and your neighbors from, you know, not being able to enjoy your property in a healthy, in a healthy way. You only have one pair of lungs, so, you know, understandable. Let's, hopefully, we can get back to you with some more information very quickly. But we have it out there and we have asked him to move. And it sounds like we may need him to move.
It's also not fair to the other brick and mortar businesses because these vendors can work very cheaply. Whereas, brick and mortar, they have to pay taxes, they've got more upkeep, they've got waiters and waitresses.
Right.
So it's not fair to them.
These are some of the things that we need to address.
Right, which I just recently wrote a letter to the chamber to bring the issue up about food trucks. Which I copied you and Planning Board and Steve.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Linda. Okay, any more public comments? Okay, let's delve into the agenda. First thing is a fairly quick thing. We have a memo from our Rec Commissioner, John Kuhn, our Park Director, and Doug Strawinski. As you know, there's been a little bit of deferred maintenance with regard to our existing fields. And they're looking to redo some of the infield work. They have an estimate here that they've obtained by talking to contractors. They're gonna have a lot of volunteer work associated with it. They have in their park lands line, $14,000. This estimate is for 15 slightly thereafter. They're just looking for approval right now to spend what they have, the 14, on this project. If they do in fact need that extra thousand, we may have to come back and do a budget line adjustment. Were there any questions regarding the communication from Doug and John? Bill?
No, 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 agree with it.
Okay. Jim?
Don't make sense, Robert.
Okay, very good. I think we can do this by a simple motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving right along. Okay, so we have, we put on the agenda for today, although we don't have a couple of our town board members. One is on vacation and one is healing from having some work done on his parks, as they say. But we do have the incentive zoning amendment to our existing code. And I wonder, did you all have any comments on it? I did not hear from Sarah or Harry. And I didn't know if you were ready to schedule a public hearing.
We've discussed this for a year or two now. Really, ourselves, right?
Are you happy with this draft, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
I am too, so long as our attorney for the town signs off on it, right, still?
This is a draft that I think represents our current discussion. So I think it's ready for your hearing process. We have an environmental assessment form from Michelle. So that we're in a position to be able to receive that and the part one, EAF. And then start that process if you're ready to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm certainly ready to start the EAF process. I think if we do establish a public hearing, what I might suggest is I understand we won't have Harry back for the August 16th meeting. I might suggest now that we have an earlier September meeting, that we call the public hearing for that date. If that works for you all.
September 7th?
September 7th.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to have the full board here.
Yeah, let's do it.
So why don't we do our secret work in the meantime?
So if we could turn in your packet, you should have a full environmental assessment form and a coastal assessment form, both of which were prepared by Michelle. And those forms explain that the proposed action provides a procedure for payment of an incentive fee and installments if a subdivision plot or site plan is proposed to be filed in sections and clarifies how the yearly adjustment of the community benefit cash payment is calculated. And the environmental assessment form then is, this is the first part, which explains the action. And it does indicate that it would be referred to the planning board because it is a zoning amendment for their advisory recommendations and referred to the county planning department again for their advisory recommendations. But the town board is the only involved agency. So there is a resolution then for, the first press motion for consideration should be under packet, is a resolution, the lead agency resolution, classifying the action and determining lead agency. And I guess before we do that, typically, we would have the board authorize the supervisor to sign the EAF since it's being submitted by yourself, to yourself.
It's really only filled in through page three.
Right, right.
All those other pages are empty there. I so move to authorize the supervisor to submit the full environmental assessment form as prepared.
Okay. Jim?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So then, then the next thing would be to consider the resolution that Michelle prepared, classifying the action and establishing the town board as lead agency, classifying the action as a type one action.
So if I would...
Single page reservation.
I would propose the following. Whereas the Town Board, the Town of Red Hook has proposed amendments to Chapter 143 of the Town Code entitled zoning to amend the provisions for open space incentive zoning in the Town of Red Hook. And whereas a full environmental assessment dated today, July 27th, 2016, was prepared for the proposed action. And whereas the board has reviewed the thresholds for type one and type two actions set forth in the New York Code. Whereas after examining the EAF, the town board has determined that there are no other involved and/or federal agencies in this matter since no other agency has approval authority with respect to the proposed action. So now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby determines that the proposed action is a type one action. Be it further resolved that the town board hereby declares itself lead agency for the review of this action and it is the only involved agency. Be it further resolved that a determination of significance will be made at such time as all reasonably necessary information has been received by the board to enable it to determine whether the action will or will not have a significant effect on the environment. I so move.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion and question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
So, excuse me, Chris. Robert's supposed to sign page 13 on the EAF.
Yes, please.
Coastal management?
So coastal management is part of the, yeah, that's part of the EAF on this one. But you can sign that one as well. That's part of the, it's an additional page that's required because we're doing an LWRP review.
We don't need a separate resolution for that?
No.
No.
We can include it with the EAF.
So you have that signed?
Yeah.
Just make sure you include that. It's a supplemental form. And then the next resolution that you would have to consider would be a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of local law H proposed of 2016 regarding open space incentive zoning. And we do have a blank in the resolution for the date of the public hearing and the time of the public hearing.
And I would like to suggest that we make our public hearing September 7th at 7:35. If that time is convenient for you all.
So I propose the following resolution then, is okay? Then whereas a proposed form of local law entitled a local law amending Section 143-49.2 entitled Open Space Incentive Zoning in the Code of the Town of Red Hook, the proposed local law has been submitted to the town board. And whereas a proposed local law would provide for a procedure for payment of an incentive fee in installments if a subdivision plot or site plan is proposed to be filed in sections and clarifies how the yearly adjustment of the community benefit cash payment is calculated. And whereas pursuant to the general municipal law, proposed amendments to zoning must be referred to the Department of Planning and Development for its review and report. Whereas pursuant to Town Code, proposed amendments to zoning introduced by the town board should be referred to the planning board for a period of 45 days for a report recommendation. Whereas the town board has classified the action as a type one action and declared its intent to serve as lead agency. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the Town of Red Hook. One, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook shall hold a public hearing on September 7th, 2016, at 7:45?
35.
7:35 PM at Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law. Two, the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notices of said public hearing in the Poughkeepsie Journal and Kingston Freeman honor before...
August 28th?
August 28th, 2016, which is not less than 10 calendar days prior to the date of said public hearing. And three, the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of proposed local law to, to the Planning Board for a report and recommendation and for recommendations regarding insistency with a local waterfront revitalization plan.
Is that a page, that resolution?
Is there a board?
There should be, yeah.
And four.
Coastal assessment.
The Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of the proposed local law to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for a report recommendation under the general municipal law. And lastly, the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of such public hearing notice to the clerks of the adjacent municipalities. I so move.
Second.
Thank you both very much. Any further discussion? Okay, so we'll have a public hearing September 7th at 7:35. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number three. Consideration of Resolution Granting Approval of Acquisition of Recreational Parcel with Community Preservation Funds. Okay, and this references this parcel of land we are going to acquire for $55,000 plus associated closing costs. And it's a resolution granting approval, parcel number 6273298262. Whereas a public hearing was held this evening at 7:35. Discussion of the matter having been had and all persons desiring to be heard have been heard, including those in favor and those in opposition regarding a proposed use of money. So we didn't hear any opposition. Whereas the town board has previously determined that the purchase of such parcel is an unlisted action and adopted a negative declaration with respect to such purchase. And it was referred to the purchase, was referred to our Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board for their review and recommendation pursuant to Chapter 57 of the Code. And the use of the monies to complete the purchase of the parcel is in the best interest of the town. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook that the officers of the town are duly authorized and directed to consummate the funding of the acquisition through the application of funds for such purpose from the CPF for the purchase price of $55,000 together with other related closing costs. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion before we go ahead and vote? I know we've talked about this at previous meetings, but...
Nope.
Okay.
Good thing.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's roll call since it is an expenditure. Bill?
Yes.
Myself, aye. Jim?
Yes.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item has been the vein of my existence for the last few days. And that's this CFA grant, the Local Government Efficiency Grant we discussed at the previous meeting. And just filling out this grant has consumed more hours than I care to report. But we did need to resolve an amount to apply for. And I have a suggestion for that. Since the estimated cost of the project, this is the Challenger Field Rec Park Annex. Since the total cost of the project is $529,000. And I believe we are soliciting at least $400,000 between the county and the CDBG grants. My suggestion would be that we consider applying to the state for less than the max, which is $200,000. But for $129,000, and if you recall, for this application, there's a 10% match from the local municipality, which obviously will be providing anyway with the project of this size and scope. And that's, that's what I have for a suggestion.
So what's it later? The project cost is $529,000.
$529,000.
We're applying for...
$129,000 of that total, $529,000 is my suggestion. We did $250,000 to shared services. We intend to do another grant next month. I think CDBG will come out. This is sort of an ideal application. But the max there will be $150,000. So $250,000, $150,000, $400,000 leaves us with $129,000. Now, I don't expect we'll get all this money, so don't get too excited. But, you know, whatever we do get will obviously defray the cost to the taxpayers and we can continue throughout the construction of this additional lands to apply for more grant funding. Any thoughts?
Well, I agree with it.
Okay. Jim, any thoughts?
No, that's fine. It is closer to our goal.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna count, you know, count our chickens before they hatch. But, you know, the more applications we submit, the more opportunities. So, we do have a resolution number?
73.
73, thank you, Sue. Dated July 27th. Dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. And Jim, would you like to read this resolution?
Certainly, Robert. Resolution authorizing submission of application for a local government deficiency grant regarding Challenger Field. Whereas the town of Red Hook is participating in the local government deficiency grant program, which provides technical assistance and competitive grant to local governments for the development of projects. And whereas it is in the best interest of the town of Red Hook to submit the local government efficiency grant application for the recreation park expansion Challenger Field project grant application. And whereas the maximum amount of the grant application to be applied for is one hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
No, well, I think in this case it's two hundred thousand as the maximum to be applied for.
So is that?
But I think in section one will be, well, no, I think that's right. It should be, it should be one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. You're correct, Jim.
One hundred and twenty-nine there?
Yeah.
By the town. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook as follows. The town board hereby authorize the supervisor or in his absence, the deputy supervisor to execute and submit the grant application as project sponsor in a maximum estimated project cost of, is that the total project cost?
I think the way this is phrased will just make it one twenty-nine again, right?
Make that one twenty-nine as well?
Right, that, i- if you wanted to add another line to explain that for, from, of a total project cost of, you know?
What, five hundred and twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Sorry, Jim, I gave you what looked like an easier resolution I followed.
So, as a project sponsor, an estimated project cost of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and you want to have stating the total?
Of a total project cost of five twenty-nine.
Of the total project cost of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
That make sense?
Yeah.
For the Rec Park expansion Challenger Field project with a ten percent match to the hundred and twenty-nine thousand applied for in this grant application?
Mm-hmm.
The officers, employees, and agents of the town are hereby authorized and directed for, and in the name of and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things as may be necessary or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or agent acting desirable and proper to affect the purposes of the foregoing resolution. And this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Jim. I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, we're moving right along very nicely. We have item number five, which is a consideration of a resolution to adopt negative decoration relating to land acquisition. We are contemplating acquiring a small piece of land adjacent to the Town Hall Highway Garage campus. We were approached by a landowner and we are trying to think sort of for the future, decades ahead, and we think we have an opportunity at a very minimal cost to secure a better future for our local government. So we have, we have in front of us the discussion and the opportunity to authorize a purchase of that property. First, we need to do some seeker work and we have in front of us, we circulated to the planning board and the ZDA are intend to be a lead agency and you have in your packet it's forms from both of those boards who met within the last couple of weeks and they both consent to the town being the lead agency in this potential transaction. We have the motion to that effect. We have a resolution adopting a secret determination of non-significance regarding the acquisition of a parcel of land from Howland, that's the landowner.
And accompanying that you have the short environmental assessment form prepared by Crawford in this case. And I believe that the board previously reviewed that and also reviewed the
We did.
Short environmental assessment form, part two impact assessment. Is that correct?
Yes, we did all of that at the previous special meeting. So I don't know that it's in our folder for this meeting.
If anybody needs to see it, I can.
Do you have an extra copy? Because we don't have it in our folder since we did it at a special meeting. Maybe for Jim.
Oh, yeah.
That's what that meeting.
Right, we had this discussed prior to that meeting.
Yeah. So Jim, if you want to take a minute to review that, please.
Does it say it's here?
No.
So this is part three of the form, right, Chris?
That's part, part one and part two for a short form. This is just part one and part two.
Okay, so we don't need part?
So then this is just a negde, right?
Okay.
Because the answers that you had checked off, the one that I reviewed, that you had checked off in the conversation that you had previously at the prior meeting indicated that you had identified no significant effects in connection with that acquisition.
I want to keep that for your file.
Sure.
Chris?
Thanks.
Okay, so so the resolution first adopting the secret determination. Bill, do you want to tackle that?
Whereas the town board is the secret lead agency for conducting the environmental review of proposed acquisition for approximately one acre.
Yeah.
Easternly portion of certain tax parcels identified on our tax maps and listed in the resolution for the purchase price of ninety thousand dollars per acre. And whereas on July twenty-seventh, the town board classified the action as an unlisted action under seeker and declared its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project, which we're doing tonight. Whereas the town board has prepared a full environmental assessment form for the proposed action and whereas the town board has considered the criteria contained in the New York State Code and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of environmental concerns disclosed in the EAF and any comments of involved agencies. And whereas the town board has determined that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, now therefore be it resolved by the town board. One, that we adopt a negative declaration and determine that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. And two, authorizes and directs the town clerk to distribute a copy of this resolution to all involved and interested agencies, the town supervisor, and any person that has requested a copy and to make all other filings required by law.
And Councilman O'Neil, I have one edit that I see that we should make, which is that in this case you did a short environmental assessment form because it was unlisted and so if I could have you in the third paragraph delete the word full.
So I meant that proposed resolution to show in the third paragraph?
Thank you.
A short environmental assessment form has been prepared as required by law.
Thank you. I'll second your motion, Phil. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So we now are at the point where resolution number seventy-five, is that correct? Our next resolution?
Just agree. The first resolution is already passed.
Yeah, seventy-five.
This is, right, so it is, you're right. So it is a No, this is the one, no, no, this is the one where you're authorizing a purchase agreement. We have not a purchase agreement for this one. We did for the Rec Park, but this is our first consideration of the acquisition.
Authorizing a purchase agreement.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Jim, do you want to tackle this one? Hopefully I don't give you a tongue-in-press this time.
Yep. Oh, just for public information, I'll read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Resolution authorizing purchase agreement for a Howland acquisition subject to permissive referendum. Whereas the owner of certain tax parcels identified as tax map number six-two-seven-two-dash-zero-zero-dash-three-one-two-four-one-zero and six-two-seven-two-dash-zero-zero-dash-three-one-two-four-zero-zero at Broadway and seven-three-three-two Broadway in the town of Red Hook has offered to convey approximately one eight, one eastern acre, eastern portion of such parcels, the Howland rear parcel, to the town for a purchase price of ninety thousand per acre. And whereas such Howland rear parcel is located immediately adjacent to the Town Hall and Highway Garage property, and whereas the town board has determined that the proposed action constitutes an unlisted action and has determined under seeker that such action will not have a significant effect on the environment, now therefore be it resolved as follows. The form of purchase agreement to acquire the Howland rear parcel for the town's public purposes at a purchase price of ninety thousand per acre is hereby approved. The supervisor or in his absence, the deputy supervisor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a purchase agreement consistent with this resolution. The acquisition of such Howland rear parcel shall be subject to permissive referendum. Within ten days after the adoption of this resolution, the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause to be published at least once in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman newspapers, having a general circulation in the town and hereby designated as official newspapers of the town and to be posted on the signed board of the town maintained pursuant to the town law. A notice which was set forth the date of adoption of this resolution and contained abstract thereof, concisely stating its purpose and effect and specifying that this resolution was adopted subject to permissive referendum. Three, the resolution shall take effect thirty days after adoption unless there shall be filed with the town clerk a petition signed and acknowledged by the electors of the town qualified to vote upon a proposition to raise and expend money in number equal to at least five percentum of the total vote cast for governor in the town at the last general election, help for the election of state officers protesting against this resolution and requesting that the matter be submitted to the qualified electors of the town at a referendum in the manner provided by Article seven of the town law. Four, the officers, employees, and agents of the town are hereby authorized and directed for, and in the name and on behalf of the board to do all acts and things as may be necessary or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or agent acting desirable and proper to affect the purposes of the foregoing resolution. So move.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? For the public's knowledge, they should know that we have the funds to make this purchase. It will not be necessary to raise taxes in order to do so. In fact, we did hear from the state just this week, as a matter of fact, that the tax cap limit for us for our next fiscal year will be an increase of no greater than point six percent. So we'll be managing our budgets hopefully very wisely for next year as well.
Why does it still refer to that as a two percent cap? But you know, they lower it every year.
Yeah, the max, the max of two percent. We're finding out.
The max of point six percent?
Point six percent, less than one percent.
I do have a question in the, in the discussion. The, the value, you know, the estimate, a hundred and ten thousand dollar assessed value, whatever, we got appraisal, does that impact at all in what we're doing here? Have you been able to?
No, that, that just is an assessment of the value of the property and as you know, we cannot acquire property for less than, you know, its value.
Right. But that fits with our resolutions.
Yep, that's all.
It's simply a finale.
It would be a problem if they appraised it at fifty thousand, we were willing to pay ninety, but.
We wouldn't be able to.
But so far we're satisfied with that appraisal.
Yep.
It's, it's, no other discussion to make.
Okay. Very good, since this is an expenditure again, would you like to do a roll call, Phil?
Yes.
Myself, aye. Jim?
Yes.
The resolution carries, thank you very much. We are now at item number six. As I have corresponded with you over the last, I think, couple of weeks, it was brought to my attention a little while ago that there's going to be a new mine operating in Elizaville. It is a mine that's had a permit for decades but has not actively been mined. The mining permit application in front of DEC, the plan, I should say, from the operator has at least sixty-two trucks leaving the site each day, many of which will be of significant size and weight, I think up to twenty-two wheelers, and that does not include other trucks going to pick up materials. The site is off of County Route nineteen. My understanding is that the materials are going to be brought to a processing center, Red Wing's processing center on, I believe it's County Route fifty-five. I bring this to your attention because the increased truck traffic, which is likely to go through, as it does now, through Upper Red Hook and then down to our village center, could significantly impact the delays that we experience and also affect our community character. So in discussion with our engineers who are doing work for the town of Red Hook, Livingston, where the mine sits, it was suggested to me that if we had any comments to offer to DEC where we would like to avoid having all that additional traffic come to, that we should make those comments in the next few days if possible. So what I'd like to do is see if I can get some input from at least the two of you this evening and authorization to have some correspondence with DEC to see if we can encourage them to make as a condition of approval a route that does not have the potential for a significant negative impact upon our communities. So there's a couple of maps, I think, oh, there's one map, there was supposed to be two, but if I could direct your attention to in the, somewhere in the middle of the page, County Route nineteen, where it says Elizaville. And then you see County Route fifty-five, which is over by Spring Lake. And that is essentially that area where the materials will be brought out to the processing plant, which actually straddles, my understanding is, it straddles the county border between Columbia and Dutchess. And so what I'd like to suggest is that we ask DEC, since their mining plan for the public's education, it indicates that all the materials, or ninety percent of the materials, will actually be going to Southern Dutchess County. So they'll be driving through most of the county with these materials to get to their end destination. I'd like to suggest to DEC that they take into consideration the impacts on our village and Upper Red Hook and for that matter, the southern portion of the town and what those implications would be traffic-wise, and that they direct those trucks easterly when they come down to Dutchess County and then perhaps take the trucks down south, some other route besides going Route nine. Do you all have any initial thoughts on that?
I don't know what other route they have though, Robert. You know, they can't take those trucks on the iconic.
Right, but there are some county roads that take, take them down to one ninety-nine and then could take them down further on other county roads. They can do this without going on any local town roads.
Well, it is a dilemma, but I mean, I would agree to ask you to check the DOT. I'm also reminded that there's recently some publication in the paper about a law that was passed in the town of Poughkeepsie where they limited truck traffic for bottaining heavy trucks delivering to a center, a distribution center in Hamburg, Hamburg.
Okay.
So that's right now in court, actually.
Was that on local town roads or is that? Was that on local town roads, or is that on state?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but it was a town law that was passed restricting the truck traffic, and it was being challenged. And it's now in arbitration to try to work out some type of settlement.
Okay.
So they want to have as many as sixty-two trucks.
Well, there'll be sixty-two trucks leaving, leaving the site, so obviously many of those trucks will be coming back to the site.
How is that, but they'll be leaving the site on Columbia Route nineteen and taking it to...
To the site on Duchess Route fifty-five, which is what nineteen turns into after it crosses the border, and the, and the plant that's going to process it, as you say, is sort of, it crosses the border there of us in Columbia. So how many more trips are they going to be taking than they're taking already once they leave fifty-five and head south? Because I'm sure a lot of their gravel is already being trucked in a southerly direction from their processing plant at, at that gravel mine.
Well, why this is significant, Jim, is, my understanding is, they, they have a plant, a, a mine down in Stormville, which they're closing or have just closed, and they are going to move those operations up to Elizaville, just off of County Route nineteen and what's called Eightman Road. And so there'll be, I imagine there'll be a dramatic increase in their truck traffic because they won't be taking materials from, from the south and distributing them down in that region of the county. Materials will now be coming from the north and processed at their plant and then making their way all the way down to Southern Duchess. And this is according to their plan that they've submitted to D E C.
What does Ryan Beck say about this?
I don't know if Ryan Beck, we were not even circulated by the town of Livingston, but my understanding is we will be now. So the sooner we can get in comments for D E C, because D E C is reviewing, they've asked for, they've asked Red Wing to do a traffic study, traffic analysis, and so it's probably best if we can get our comments in now, I'm told by our engineer. And I feel very strongly that having twenty-two wheelers, a whole slew of them, coming through our village, which is already at times overwhelmed by heavy-duty truck traffic, and certainly we've seen, we've all seen even during the slow summer season, the backup, which can extend past CPS, I can't imagine what it's going to be like with a whole bunch of twenty-two wheelers.
How many a day are they expecting?
Difficult, I'm sorry?
How many a day did they say that was in there?
Well, that's, that's the sixty-two trucks leaving, so assuming they come back.
From six, six a.m. to six p.m.
Right, and don't forget that doesn't include all the trucks that don't belong to them, where the independent haulers will be going to that processing center in order to now take advantage of the materials that'll be mined just north of there. So we could talk, we could be talking about something that could have a significant impact upon...
Well, the problem is, you know, it's, it's a needed material, you, you have to have, they have to have that.
Right.
So the, and the problem that we have is that really the main north-south route runs through our village. You know, unless there's, they can, they can way, any way on a, with a good county road that doesn't use a lot of extra fuel and burn up energy that way and, and, and split between nine G and Route nine or something like that, I don't see how else they could get to Southern Duchess in a practical manner, just because of the infrastructure that we do have.
Is there a chance that they may choose a different route because of the congestion that we already have in the village?
I'm, I'm sure that's possible. Theresa, I don't know necessarily that we want to not participate in this discussion, and, and I'm not a big fan of leaving things to chance, especially when it may affect the quality of life for folks living in the village in Upper Red Hook and for that matter throughout the town. You know, it's difficult enough sometimes to get, you know, in or out on Route nine, and, and these trucks don't have the agility that, you know, smaller vehicles have.
So, I'm sorry, I missed it, are they talking sixty-two trucks a day?
Sixty-two trucks a day leaving, which I would imagine there would be at least sixty-two trucks coming back, or most of them coming back. That does not include the independent haulers. As their plan indicates, it does not include employees or other associated trucks related to the line. And, yes, there's nothing we can do to stop. They have an active permit, it's been removed, renewed rather, over the decades, so the, the mining will, it sounds like, take place. Jim, it's just really about can we influence the traffic in such a way that it won't, that we can minimize the potential negative impact on our community.
Well, the only way to do it would be to figure out a good way to get them to three-oh-eight and then nine G and head south that way. You know, of course, then they've got to deal with East Park when they take nine G, so that's, that's the problem.
How do you get the state to allow those trucks on the Teconic Parkway?
No, I don't think we're going to do that.
I don't think that will.
I don't think we're going to do that.
Because why? I mean, when you look at a map, it's a no-brainer.
Well, yeah, but they don't let those trucks on the Teconic Parkway, just because it's not built for the trucks, can't handle it.
But what we're saying is the, the old Route nine, all the post-road, is not built for this many trucks, it is large either, so.
Right, but you don't have a significant amount of truck traffic on it already, it's proven that the trucks can get through, but I doubt that they'd run it through the Teconic.
Everything that goes south is there already, you're right.
So, well, shall we take a stab at, at trying to get them to take a look at alternative routes? Would you be okay with that, Bill?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd say ask them to any possible alternative route that have the least amount of impact on their, you know, our center villages is real the problem is.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd be happy to work on a draft and distribute that for your approval before it goes out, and that'll be done in conjunction with our engineer who's doing some work related to the project for another municipal alimony. So I don't know that I need a motion, but I appreciate your approval. So we can move right into item number seven, which are board reports. And Jim, would you like to start out with the planning board report?
Cam, I believe I've got it here. Planning board met twice in both June and July. The board commenced or continued to review the following projects. An application for a certificate of appropriateness to construct a single-family home on a two-acre lot in the hamlet of Upper Red Hook. An application to construct a nine-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot addition to an existing building housing offices in the R-one-point-five zoning district in the hamlet of Panandale, the Bard Behringer House. The board conducted public hearing for and granted conditional approval to a site plan application to prove parking lot lighting, Red Hook congregation of the Jehovah's Witnesses. The board granted certificate of appropriateness for a residential renovation project in Upper Red Hook and a one-story, three-bay garage in historic overlay district. The board approved three site plan amendment applications after determining that each was limited in scope and required no further review. And the board granted extension of conditional approvals to a subdivision creating eleven residential lots, one lot for the community subject system, and one open space parcel and approximately one-hundred-point-four-five acres in the A.B. agriculture business and R.D. three rural development acre zoning district preserve at Lakeskill. And that was their June-July report.
Very good, thank you very much, Jim. We have some reports from building, the building department, Bill?
The building department for July of two thousand and sixteen issued thirty-four permits. They conducted fifty-five inspections. They dealt with thirty-seven certificates of occupancy. There were four complaints that were reviewed and handled, and their income, the revenue for the month of July was thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars and eighty
Very good. I was happy to see on the individual reports, we get reports of what the building permits were for, quite a few permits for solar installations, showing the success of our solarized Northern We also have, Red Hook Police Department has a report for the month, Bill, also?
Well, the police department for June of two thousand and sixteen had a total incidents for the reporting period of ninety-three that were handled by the police department. There were a total of eight arrests made and thirty-six tickets issued during that
Okay, thank you very much. And you see there are quite a few animal complaints, and you probably read in the news about some folks who were arrested for leaving their animals in the cars during the heat. We'll just remind you to be careful with that. Jim, the purchasing department has a report. Ted?
Yep, this is for purchasing activity from June thirtieth through July twenty-seventh. During the above period, twenty-nine purchase orders were issued in the amount of thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents, the largest, thirty thousand, nine-hundred-and-four, being to Colaruso and Sons for paving the town garage parking lot. Colaruso was the lowest bidder. Pretty much it.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much. There's also a, a water department report, Chance?
Yep, this is for the month of June, which is the latest one that we have, obviously, because July is not over. Of course, well, one was rehabbed a second time, we've mentioned that before, and it's now pumping at two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. It's good to know that well, it's back in full action. All the other parameters and so on and so forth are fine, the filters are running fine, our sodium hypochlorite supply is fine, we have spare filters in stock, they checked the hydrant on Alder Street, you know, the couple problems that, that are through the system that are working out. The, the vines were cut on the pump house and the tank fence. They discussed the, the street valve operation and, you know, B R I is working on some valves. We repaired the current stop at fourteen Aspen Wall, and the water media's usage, two million gallons. We will test some of these meters for accuracy, just to make sure they're working fine. Their work list, you know, the brush, paint the walls inside the pump house, they received an estimate of seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, Hank approved the work and signed the contract for painting and then moisture control, locate the valve for hydrant located on Alder Street. The water tank inspection, as we had discussed earlier, is postponed until two thousand and seventeen, which is fine, and the fence needs repairs at the water tower, and that's on their list of to-do.
Thank you very much, Jim. I think we're moving now into committee reports. Bill? First, do you have your task force?
Yeah, the, the task force in July continued to discuss, review the proposed special report on drive-through and formula businesses, the last revision being dated July seventh, two thousand and sixteen. The final draft is not yet completed, will be worked on in the next couple of meetings. There will not be a meeting this Friday because vacation schedules and the revised draft is not available yet. The task force in July also began a discussion regarding signage, reviewing a New York State Division of Local Government Services document entitled Municipal Control of Signs and examining our current law of Chapter one forty-three of the zoning law, and these will continue.
And America, there's also a Recreation Commission report for you, Bill?
Yes, Recreation Commission, again, submitted a huge report that two thousand and sixteen summer rec programs are underway. So far, everything is going smoothly. The rec commission submitted the completed two thousand and sixteen biannual programs report to the Division of Youth Services as required. We've got a new member from Bard College. The maintenance at the rec park is, is going on and being managed, the new volleyball nets are up. The Linden Avenue Bridge, as everybody knows, is, has been reopened, so that'll be available for the rec programs. There's a new recreation playground director, Clinton Johnson, phys ed teacher at Mill Road Elementary School, has started to work as our new playground director. There's a, an app for summer recreation program communications, it's been created by our new director, Clinton Johnson, and it's a method through which parents and staff can communicate through Remind, a safe, free, simple messaging tool that helps teachers share important updates and reminders with students and parents. So you would have to contact John Kuhn at the rec commission to understand how that works and what it's all about, but it is, it is being made available. There is, in two thousand and sixteen, the Ryan Beck Legion Band Concert will schedule a performance on Tuesday, August second, at the Linden Avenue Middle, Middle School at seven p.m. The repair of the tennis courts and basketball courts are, is a subject being reviewed with the supervisor's office and the town board, and will be addressed by the rec commission as best they can with the time, time well limited. Infield rebuilds has already been discussed by the town board tonight, and it was approved to use some of the capital funds of the rec commission to redo the infield of all three ball fields that require removal and replacement of the infield material, and that will be done this season. As you know, the rec park continues to maintain the St. Margaret's Home. They're looking for funding opportunities through Duchess County and elsewhere. The grill at the pavilion has been fixed so that it shouldn't be a danger to anybody and has been outlined to avoid any kind of accidents there. They received two galvanized bicycle racks in Duchess County are being placed in the, up at the rec park. And as you know, we're, their rec park is working with the town board and supervisor's office on the grants to construct ball fields for disabled players. And I think that's about it. They repaired parking light fixtures at the rec park, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill, it's a very lengthy report, I know. Excuse me, I know it's hard to summarize. Okay, let me have a tickle on my throat, excuse me. Senior Services Committee monthly report.
Oh, would you read that?
Yeah, the committee met on June twenty-second, discussed outreach in the senior community for membership and input for senior programming for the proposed community center. They spoke about red magnetic emergency medical information packets designed to be placed on the exterior of a refrigerator, suggested this was also a way to combine outreach and service to the local senior community. And they discussed senior programming at the Red Oak Library. The committee decided to create a brief survey to be distributed to local seniors at a luncheon, the Duchess County Office of the Aging Luncheon in Tibbely, and this brief survey will discuss, you know, interests and needs of the senior community in the town of Red Hook. And there may be an information table at such events in the future. And there may be an information table at such events in the future by the Senior Services Committee. And the committee is presently discussing with its members the importance of drafting a mission statement by the Senior Services Committee.
Okay, and then there's a tree commission report. Hopefully, I can get through it without a tickle in my throat. The commission discussed the following items at their July nineteenth meeting. Ten-year Tree City stickers will be attached to the Tree City signs to let folks know that we hit that important milestone. There are plans for Hard Scrabble Day. We'll be contacting one of our landlords to ask for permission to set up a table on the old phone company front lawn there in the village. The committee members walked around the new town building parking lot and contemplated tree options. The parking lot project is almost finished. We need our lights and we need a couple of trees. And our sidewalk project will start in the fall, and that will impact just a little bit of the front of the town hall campus. Upper Red Hook planting project was reviewed, as you know, we discussed in a previous meeting. They are now awaiting the final go-ahead from DOT. Pruning scheduled, Hop Michael and Dave Grover are scheduled to prune maples at the rec park, and other pruning will take place in the fall. And I believe those are all the committee reports that I have. Does anybody else have anything I'm not aware of? No.
Could I just note that I believe that it's Tivoli Yard Sale Day on Saturday?
Oh, yes. I apologize, yes. It's Tivoli Yard Sale Day on Saturday, and then the following weekend, I believe it's August seventh, that Saturday, whatever that Saturday is, is Tivoli Community Day. So, they would want us to help publicize that, both of those events. And if you have not been to Tivoli recently, it's just looking wonderful, and their local businesses are doing quite well. So, I invite you to go see your other village. Okay, so we do have some correspondence. First, we have word from our county executive. Your supervisor earlier this month, the city of Troy became the first municipality in New York State to adopt Duchess County's Think Differently Initiative, doing so unanimously. I respectfully ask your town to similarly consider our Think Differently Initiative, which would be a great step forward for residents with special needs, one that can be replicated throughout our state. And there is a resolution to that effect that's attached with this communication. Jim, I wondered if this is something you'd be kind enough to read?
Oh, wait, do we have the full board here for that?
Do you want the full board for that? Okay, we can do that.
But is there, there is no time limit here.
There's no time limit. We can, would you like to do this in September, when we have a full board, September seventh?
Unless, unless Jim feels otherwise.
That's fine, yeah, either way is fine.
Okay. All right, so why don't we, we'll put this on the September seventh.
September seventh.
Agenda.
I'm in favor of it, but it'd be, to make sure we have the full board.
Okay, that's a good idea. We do have a couple of letters, which came to the supervisor's office. I wanted to read both of these if I could, because we take a tremendous amount of pride in our community and the volunteers. This town and these villages could not operate, quite frankly, if we didn't have the kind of commitment from volunteers that we do have. And occasionally, some of our residents take the time out to let us know just what a terrific job those folks are doing. And I wanted to read two communications. One is from a resident. Dear Mr. McKeon, my husband and I have been residents of the town of Red Hook for the past forty-five years. Both our daughters, granddaughter and great-grandson have attended the Town of Red Hook Summer Recreation Program. My husband and I have recently been assigned the task of escorting our grandson to and from the aforementioned program and staying with him during the duration. This has provided us with the opportunity to observe program staff and the interaction between the staff and the children who attend the recreation program. We would like to take this opportunity to commend Recreation Director Quentin Johnson and his staff for their commitment to the program and the children. Mr. Johnson, AKA Coach, as he is known to everyone, has a warm rapport with staff, students, and family members. He knows all of the children who attend the activity and greets them by name in a big smile. He listens patiently and provides positive reinforcement and respect for all who are fortunate enough to know him. In return, the staff and children like and respect him as he is an excellent role model. At this time, our family extends many thanks to the members of the Red Hook Town Board for this wonderful summer recreation program and for the appointment of Quentin Johnson as Recreation Director of a great summer recreation program. You've chosen well. Well, thank you very much. I read more, and we have to thank Quentin for doing a terrific job, and we could not have chosen him if he did not step forward and ask for that position. And I will say, we've got lots of compliments about all the work that everyone who's employed there at the rec park has done. We also had a communication from Cornell University Cooperative Extension, Jeff Walnot, I believe is how he pronounces his name. Hello, Mr. McKeon and others. I am the program leader for the Environment and Energy Program for Cornell Cooperative Extension in Duchess County. Our team talked with you several weeks ago about organics and management options for the area. I had the opportunity to spend the morning at the transfer station run by the town and managed by TJ Hackett last Saturday. I want to tell you I am particularly impressed with what TJ's team there has done. With limited resources and creativity, they have created a welcoming, efficient, versatile, and smart facility. The people dropping off recyclables and garbage were nearly all in a great mood. Happy to have opportunities to drop off their recycling and grab some mulch even. The space in the building for people to drop off still usable items is brilliant and encapsulates forward-thinking. I'd love to know what other ideas TJ has. The team was consistently gracious in helping people, too. I was really impressed and wanted to let you know, I think the town of Red Hook is really lucky to have these folks working for you. I would hope this could be a model for other transfer stations to emulate. Again, just another great example of why people love living in this community and the sense of community that we can establish at even rather unusual locations, what some people mistakenly refer to as the dump. Apparently, it's run really well on very little funding and is a place that people enjoy going to. Teresa, did you have any report that you would like to make on the highway department?
I would just like to let people know that we're working on the Echo Valley Road Reclamation Project. We're completed, we've completed two days. The third day will be done tomorrow, and the road will be basically a dirt road until August eighth. So, if they take care while they're driving there, we'll have signage. August eighth and ninth will begin paving, and that will be on Echo Valley Road as well as Hoffman Woods Road, West Bard, and Zabriski Court.
Okay, and that's the northern section of Echo Valley Road from the bridge?
Between the bridge and Fraley Lane, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much, Teresa. Okay, well, I believe that's all I have. Is there any other business we need to conduct this evening, Jim?
Nope.
Okay, well, if not, I'd like to thank you all. Oh, I'm sorry, Lita, yes, public comment. My apologies.
I just want everyone to know that I appreciate her work on the flowers in front of this building. It really makes it look humanized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, we took the opportunity at the last meeting to thank both Teresa and her staff, but I think we should do it every opportunity we get. They've really improved the look of the campus here, and we look forward to the project being complete. I think that it will help to enhance how we feel about being here at Town Hall, so thank you very much for your assistance. Okay, without further ado.
Motion to.
Motion to adjourn, Bill?
Adjourn, yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, so thank you very much, everyone.